Okay, we're gonna reconvene the meeting. Now, please call the board.
Jones.
Here.
Chase. Tab. Two five. Brewer.
Yeah.
Okay, public comments. All questions?
Do you need to motion to reconvene, sir?
I'm sorry, that's what I had said. I'll have to pay the motion again.
So move second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustees.
Jones.
Yes.
Motion to move to five.
Yes.
Brewer. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Saw Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may not engage in debate.
My name is Jackie Plais. I only have one question. We pay $2 a year, which is no big deal for making Lansing drainage ditch. But the ditches will force them to be forced us. When is somebody gonna come and clean those up?
You're right. I mean, you pay probably, probably gonna get a chance to pay that if you actually sell your property. Because they don't send a bill. Because when I moved from one place to the other, I didn't get a bill until I moved. When do they come out? Good question. We've asked many times. Because I've been out here thirty-five years and I've actually, visibly, never seen anybody clean them out. They get paid for it. So that's a good question. I have to give a follow-up, and I will follow-up.
My name is Dan Clark. I have a question. Page two, if I can get it. Water department funds at the bottom. Is Hawkinson the water treatment? Then it lists what appears to be chemicals. Is that the ad that explores water?
Page two at the bottom is, what's the, what's the topic? Hawkins?
Water department funds operating supplies. And then it looks like what appears to be chemicals.
You said, yeah, you talked at the bottom of the page. Hawkins? Yes, that's our chemical stuff that we have to put in.
How often are those supplied?
As needed. We have a gauge. It let us know. We have a, the, these, Public Works has a hot feeder and their computer. Everything is done that way. It lets them know when they, and they're automatically, but we have to replenish the treatment. But this automatically taken care of. It's not just, we just throw it in there. It's done through a computer.
Okay. So it provides us that.
You have to maintain certain VHS.
Yeah. And the other question, and then I'll be done, is on the next page. Under water department, one item, GL account. Three hundred dot, three zeros, seven two six. And three zeros again. Robinson. Engineering. The second item, SB lead compliance. Now, is that the test of our water? And that's a couple of weeks ago. And I was wondering, is there anything that can be commented on as far as results?
Your water, of course, can be commented on. I'm gonna let, I do know, but I'm gonna let our Public Works Director inform you.
Okay, that'll be in this.
No, he's gonna tell you right now.
All right. The, my understanding of the cost for Robinson, this is of compliance. This is new with the replacement, uh, from Michigan issue with the lead, uh, lead copper. We have our lead copper study right now that we're currently doing. We send out to residents throughout the town. But this is just for the study, for engineering. So to see if we have any issues of our own in our system. So be to check out our lines, verify if we have any lead lines, go through the process of what we have to do. We have those lines.
Okay. So that's done periodically? Or that it's continuing until it's completed in town? It's a one-time thing?
Well, this traditionally was due to the, uh, the Michigan one. So it's not an ongoing thing. Our lead copper rule that we do is done on a cycle, a three-year cycle. So that's what we do. But we sample a portion of the whole community. There's thirty different locations around that we sample for lead copper.
Are we having problems anywhere?
No, we're not. Every resident will get a sampling copy and a form that says what was coming out of their household. And if there is anything within the household, that will get some notifications if there's any issues.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I don't have a question. I have some comments. I'm sorry, my name is Paula Neeks. Again, kudos and a great thank you is to be extended to Sherri Dusinski. One of our seniors in the village had a problem. He was beside himself and myself and ex-trustee Brewer to the attention of Sherri. It was taken care of. I'm not going into the details. But I was, a phone call was made to me saying, "Thank you, thank you." And to listen to her, thank you. So again, thank you very much. Also, you know what? We're always looking for businesses to come into this town. But economy, we, we need to make sure that we're patronizing our businesses. Not just here in the community, in Saw Village itself, but, you know, there's businesses in Linwood. We can go as far as Crete. You know what? We need to make sure we're patronizing those businesses. You know, we all take from them, I wanna go to them, I wanna, we need things. But we need to patronize those businesses. You know, we get further, more things from them when we are patronizing them. And I, somebody in here, I have an example of that. But I just, you know, just let, we can remember to patronize the businesses here instead of keep taking from them. That's all, yeah? Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I'm sure that we, we, I've always talked about, I think, when I was trustee, that that's the only way you're gonna keep the businesses here. Is if we spend the money here. If you spend the money somewhere else, then soon they're gonna be somewhere else. So, and if you have a problem, by all means, if you have a problem with the business and you think it's not up to your standard, go to the manager. Just like you come to the mayor for something. Maybe go to the manager and say, "Complain and tell him, hey, this is not this way." He'll get to, he'll understand. Because if he doesn't, he know he won't end this long. So that's a good point. Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. Reports from officers. Mayor's report. I have a proclamation I'm going to read. It's from the National Rail Safety Week. And goes as follows. Whereas 2,025 rail break, rail grade crossing collisions resulted in seven to ninety-eight personal injuries. And were responsible for 265 fatalities in United States during 2016. And whereas 994 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States, resulting in 511 pedestrians being killed. And another 483 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights, rights away during 2016. And whereas the CN Railroad Corporation is committed to maintaining a positive and proactive approach in the communities in which CN Railroad operates. And whereas CN believes that safety is the key to outstanding railroading. And its vision is to be the safest railroad in North America by establishing an uncompromising safety culture. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad railways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with the highway rail grade crossing. Ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries. And whereas International Association of Chief of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations committed to by taking, partnering, partnering together in an effort to educate at the national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Railroad Week. Therefore, therefore, I along with the board of trustees, the law enforcement officers of the village of Saw Village, do hereby attest by full support proclaiming September twenty-fourth to September thirtieth, National Rail Safety Week. And I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety. Date is this day, twenty-sixth of September, two thousand seventeen. Mayor Derek Bridges. Okay. That'll be on file for, for anyone that wants to take a look at that. That's all that I have. Village clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I attended IML last week. And I must say that the conference was well put together by the planners. The sessions were very, very informative. I have handouts for the trustees so that you know the information that I gathered while I was there. I will make copies of those handouts as soon as our copier stabilizes. It is just a little sensitive right now and it does not play with us very well.
Is it broke?
It breaks one or two times a day, yeah. But I will be making those copies for you. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, I just wanted to say that most of the trustees in the village, who attended the IML conference. And it was great that they did because we have a brand-new board except for two trustees. And our longest trustee is only two years in. So it was great that they went down there and they all got something that they're gonna bring back to you. Either tonight or at a later date, the experience and some of the things that they actually encountered down there. If that means that, um, the copier's broke, whether we just, at least, that's why I ask that question.
I just say, Tappy, because Tappy's fine. But the Tappy company told us they were quality that we're using. It's cheap paper and it creates a lot of bust on the rollers. I mean, he said they all start coming out monthly to clean us, but...
What, what, what's that, tomorrow? I mean, because cheap paper, okay. Treasurer, treasurer's report, Ms. Mary Esteban.
I have no authority to object to this, Mayor, more than I have the authority. But at this time of year, I am going to take my resignation as treasurer of Saw Village. So I'm going forward. I have my other resignation.
Okay.
And I would like to thank you when you're bored.
Yes. Village engineer Jim Zarnik.
Thank you, Mayor. Short report tonight. The 2017 MFT CVG road resurfacing project is nearly finished. All the pumps and sidearms have been completed except for restoration. Zarnik's been installed. We're working with the contractor to get this accomplished. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Jim Zarnik, back from the injury. Glad to see you.
That was quick.
That was.
Then when you yell like that, you can hear. Okay, reports of the departments, committees, and commissions. Finance and administration director Mohan Rao.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Board. Actually, we are exploring the possibilities of moving our credit card processor to the new credit card processing company. Thereby, the village can save tons of dollars, approximately about nineteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars on an annual basis. And also, we are exploring the possibility of charging an interchange fee to the customers at the rate of three dollars per transaction. That would cover most of the expenditure of interchange transaction fees. And also, we are exploring the possibility of moving a bunch of bank accounts into a new bank. Thereby, we'll have the opportunity of applying for credit. That will definitely help for the village, given the circumstances right now what we are facing. Hopefully, it may not be facing that in future. And lastly, but not the least, the audit for what we got for this one. Whether we get the completed audit before the full extension for that estimate for the year.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate the, we talked about this at the committee meeting last week, Board. And possibly saving money by switching our current credit card processing fee company to a new one. And then, as you stated, we're gonna, when we swipe the card, there is a fee. That's why we haven't been doing it. But we're, we're just gonna pass, I don't know, use your credit card financially. It will be a three-dollar fee per transaction.
Question, Mr. Mayor. What credit card companies are we considering and what bank are we considering?
Uh, right now, I'm not sure where the board is, so, but, I think. When I get the follow-up information, I just party to the board and the mayor.
Okay. Fire department report to be read by economic development director Joseph Wizwiler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the past two weeks, the Saw Village Fire Department responded to twenty-two calls for service, which consisted of the following. Seven fire alarms, one ventilation, one C.O.L. alarm, four vehicle accidents, one box alarm, two businesses, one ambulance, P.I.S.S., two vehicle fires, one oven fire, two mutual aid. Fire prevention week starts October ninth to the fourteenth, ending with an open house at the fire station on October fourteenth from ten a.m. till noon. All are welcome to attend. Come out to the fire station, meet the crew that protects Saw Village. The fire bureau will be at all the local schools, well, doesn't say that, at the local schools, and teach the kids about fire prevention during this week. Thank you to the residents for watching out for the senior citizens and disabled. During this most recent late summer heat wave, the fire station was open as a cooling center during that time, and there was nothing to report. This concludes the chief's report.
Thank you. Police department chief Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. For the past two weeks, the police had five hundred calls for service and eight arrests, cases of interest. On September twentieth, two offenders were arrested by the Chicago Police Department in connection to an aggravated vehicular hijacking. The individuals had taken a vehicle from the victim here in Saw Village. They drove away and the victim called the police to report the incident. Responding officers placed the vehicle into the law enforcement agency data system as stolen to inform other agencies of the incident. When the Chicago Police Department ran the license plate, they received the hit. Then the vehicle was stolen, which prompted them to stop the vehicle and arrest the driver and passenger. Passenger was an adult charged with criminal trespass of vehicle. The victim was shown a lineup and picked the driver offender as the person who took the vehicle from him. State's attorney's office was contacted and approved felony charges of aggravated vehicular hijacking. Unfortunately, the driver is a juvenile and charges will have to be filed in the form of petition with the juvenile court system. This matter is still pending. And just for a safety issue, on September twentieth, a citizen of Saw Village advised she received a telephone call from an individual identifying themselves as being from the Cook County Court System. The victim said the caller sounded to be a male and advised the victim that she missed a court date for jury duty and if she did not pay eight hundred dollars, she'd be arrested. Caller then told the victim that she was in violation of FTA SRU zero zero one nine dash seventeen from the twenty-fourth of August and she was to appear at the federal courthouse at two nineteen South Dearborn, Chicago, Illinois. Caller said that the victim did not believe him. She could call deputy Ryan Walker at telephone number seven seven three six five seven five nine four five. When the victim was told she had to pay the eight hundred dollars, she was concerned and asked how she was supposed to get the money to the caller. Caller said she should stay on the phone and go to the bank and he would tell her what to do. I know. With this, the victim hung up the phone and came straight to the police department to report the call. Victim noted she had gotten a summons for jury duty in the past and had shown up to court, but she did not receive a notice recently. So doing a follow-up, I took the call and I called the phone number that she gave me. And a person answered saying that he was deputy Ryan Walker from the Cook County Sheriff's Police Department. And he was quite surprised when I says, "Well, I'm the chief of police of Saw Village," and he hung up on me. When I called back, he said some expletives and hung up again. So we tried calling him from another telephone and it went strictly, it went straight to voicemail and identified it as being a Cook County sheriff's deputy. So we did our report and we forwarded this to the Cook County Sheriff's Office. So please be aware, if anybody from the sheriff's department calls you wanting money, telling you that you're supposed to be in jury duty, come and call us. Hang up and come and call us. On October fourth, at between eight and ten in the senior senate, we will be hosting Coffee with a Cop. This is a nationwide program that was launched in Hawthorne, California in 2011 as a result of the members of the Hawthorne Police Department looking for ways to interact more successfully with the citizens they serve each day. Community policing has long been considered a framework for establishing trust between the community and the police. However, over time, the character and composition of our nation's communities have changed due to the shifting demographics, more commuters, and the introduction of different communication methods, such as websites and our illustrious social media. The Hawthorne Police Department hit upon a simple plan to break through the barriers that have been built over the years, which is a cup of coffee. In less than five years, Coffee with a Cop events have been hosted in all fifty states and is one of the most successful community-oriented policing programs across the country. Program has also extended to outside the United States, to Canada, Europe, Australia, and Africa. The key to Coffee with the Cops' growing success is that it opens the door for interactions outside of the crisis situations that typically bring law enforcement officers and community members together. I hope to see all of you there to share a cup of coffee with me.
When's the date?
October fourth between eight and ten in the senior senate.
A.M. or P.M.?
A.M. Coffee, I can't drink coffee past nine. I'll never.
No, he's, no, on your report, it said eight to ten a.m.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's eight. Oh, yeah, it's eight, eight to ten a.m. No, that's a. Although we could keep coffee.
For what event?
It would be. Thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation on Rail Safety Week. In the back on the table, I have received some rail safety tips from Canadian National Railroad. Please help yourself and take one. They're very informative. Again, I'd like to announce prescription drug drop-off. The quarterly DEA prescription drug drop-off will be held again on October twenty-eighth between eight a.m. and three p.m. in the lobby of the Saw Village Police Department, twenty-one seven, two seventeen oh one twenty-sap, here in Saw Village. We're asking for that. Anyone who would like to dispose their unwanted prescription drugs, feel free to use this opportunity to do so. I also registered us, so we're ready to go on October twenty-eighth. I received an email, as I usually do every year, from the Drug Enforcement Administration supervisor for the Chicago Field Division of DEA Strike Force Three. And it states, "Sir, as we did last year, I wanted to reiterate to you that Richard Brad Aguayo has been a tremendous asset for the DEA Strike Force Three. He is at a stage where we have increased his responsibilities because he is trustworthy and competent. He is willing to lead or assist, and it helps the team flourish. Brad is a great ambassador for your department and an integral member of this team. On a side note, thank you for letting us use your facilities. Your department has been a great partner." Thank you, Hyperarvaya Drug Enforcement Administration. Last but not least, it was mentioned a couple of weeks ago about selling t-shirts. Well, we're selling t-shirts. So our K-9 unit is trying to raise funds. And so he put together t-shirts, K-9 unit. More importantly, is the back of the shirt. And it's saying, putting a whole new meaning to fast food. So these will be for sale. If you, if you'd like to purchase one, they're twenty dollars. All the money goes for the K-9 unit. And they'll be available at the police department during normal working hours. And that'll be the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Emergency management agency director, Alabama.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I just want to express my thank you for inviting us to IML. Had a real good time down there. Met a lot of the vendors, working on our department, trying to get some people involved, get some people hired, working on our fleet and everything to try to get it up and running. We got everything up and running. My last vehicle got up and running thanks to Kevin. I think, I want to thank you, sir, in front of the board, that, with the assistance from Kevin, that we got our fleet up and running and everything's running. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Just want to say that's what Kevin does. Probably worth Kevin well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items. It's been a while since I've been able to work with you. The second final branch pickup for, for the end of the year here, September fifth started. All piles had to be out on the tenth. Any piles that had debris or garbage in them, we did leave on-site and we did notify the code enforcement for the residents to have them removed by themselves. We are gonna be starting on our tree removals. At this point right now, we were gonna start on Saw Trail, but we got assistance from the county. So that's a very big help to us. My understanding is they're gonna finish the trees. There was a total of, I think, sixteen. And then they were gonna come back and stump all these stumps with the ones that we've already cut down, plus the ones that they're digging down. Tree replacement, we don't know anything about that yet, but we'll find out more along the way. So we're gonna be starting in the section of town, probably in south side of town. We're in Applewood. We start to cut our extra trees down. So if residents see us out there, what we're doing is we remove the tree. The logs from the tree, we'll leave on-site. Residents can take the logs for firewood or whatever they're gonna use them for. We'll leave them out there about a week, give or take, maybe a few days. And whatever's left over, we will remove. Second item, grass cutting for vacant lots. This year, we had a pretty extensive list. Went up a little from last year. Total on our list was one hundred and fifty-one houses that we would have come across to look at. As we went around, we had to cut about one hundred and twenty-three of them. So that means residents are out there helping us or the owners of the properties take care of it. But that's quite, that's a nice difference for us. The list is shrinking for us because it was in the past about four that we had. So we're getting closer to that number. Also, we had a water main break on the ten-inch line that crosses three ninety-four. This was back in the beginning of the month. And what we had was, we had a forty-inch crack. We temporarily did a repair on it. This did affect the whole west side of town over there. The next day, we returned with everything, on the twenty-second, we returned to replace the section of man and put his second valve in at the end of Harper. This will help us isolate the two sections over there so we have another break on this line. We're only affecting the line itself. Rest of the business will pick up and the rest of the suburbs will pick up from the tower and then the rest will just pick up from the water on the Harper side. We also returned what we... We also returned what we turned up Monday. Next thing was on Shirley and Paxton. 222nd and Shirley, we had a water main break recently within that hole. While they were there, it broke again. Will they turn it on? And again, will they turn it on again? So we have a plan coming, it's starting on the 27th, will be tomorrow. First part of that plan is to insert a valve on 221st and Shirley. That will help us work on the main on 222nd and Shirley doing a main replacement. Our goal is to replace roughly about fifteen foot of main. Also, then we will replace the valve on the corner of Shirley and 221st. So we'll have two new main valves plus a new section of main and hopefully we won't have any more problems in that area. And that will be the future goal of any jobs that we're doing are to replace the valves so we can just replace sections of main where there are patches. Recently, we've been asked to move over onto the V-box repairs again. We've had a lot of residents coming in for rehab work, coming in repairing their houses, coming in repairing some of the vacancies, so we've been doing some of the V-boxes. We also had one on Peterson that was leaking in a driveway. That one is repaired. It's a concrete driveway that'll take a little while to replace, but we will be keeping up on that. We also did have a south side shut-off list. That list had 225 on the list. That list is completed at this time. Throughout the month of September, we've had a bunch of stuff going on too, but we had a water department went out for some quotes to do some water tank inspections and cleaning. We picked Vidco Dive. They went through all three of the water towers, two water towers in the reservoir. They had a little material removal inside, which is normal. They took care of that and they will be giving some final work on the main, some of the inside and the outside, which would be painting and welding and materials that might need to be repaired. Let's see here. During one of our flushings, we had the fire hydrant, actually was the valve, not the hydrant. We had a gasket come loose at 909 Mary Burn or Laurel Lane, sorry. And it ends up being, and this is a section of town, we have problems with the bolts. The valves themselves in there are fine, but the bolts are running away, so this one started leaking. It blew the gasket out. We had an emergency repair room in there, putting the gasket in, replacing all our stainless steel, and everything is back in service. While flushing the line out over there, as we shut it down, we came across another hydrant on Handy Lane, so 22399 Handy Lane. It is a leaker on the ground. It only leaks when the hydrant is on. That is another one we will need to replace in the bolt side after the replacement there, the one before. So it'll be a couple of weeks before we get back over there, but we will be doing that. September's hydrant flush was on the east side of town. Staff found four hydrants that had cap problems we need to remove. Everything went well. All hydrants cleared up after about a minute. Let's see here. And the last flush of the year is going to be on the south side of town. This also includes air creepers. Also, along the way here, we have a, we've sold our machinery here. Our backhoe that we have right now is a 2007 backhoe. We have some issues with it right now, some electrical issues. It's an ongoing issue with the company itself. They put some electrical parts in the background. So that was being worked on right now. We have a backup backhoe that we're currently using to do our digs. Hopefully, we'll have that backhoe up in about a week or two. It has to be sent off to the shop because they have to do work in it and shut. It's a little bit worried. We also had one where that went down. Hopefully, we won't need it anymore this time of year, but the heat kind of burned everything out for us, so we're not doing too bad. So we'll have that one repaired for next year and move on from there. Last item I have, we've been doing a little bit of work around the buildings around here. I noticed some people, case of thanks, I appreciate that, to the staff. Community Center work, we did a bunch of cleanup in front of the community center. Tree removals, branch removals, cleanup over there. To the police department, took care of a bunch of stuff over there. We've had different buildings, the police department, we've been inside there doing some work. We're going to kind of pull out there, come to the Villa Chaw here in the next few weeks and we're going to do some work over here and we will return, so we're not disappearing forever. We're also working at the Hometown Arrow Site. We patched the roadway over there and we removed some debris around the building and we'll be removing the pile here when we have our chipper back out. And Pavo work, any for anybody who complains about Pavo, that's ongoing and it's always ongoing, so until we do their street repair, it will be continuous. Last item I have, I noticed one of the residents asked about some water treatment. We treat our water with three different chemicals. The three different chemicals are based off of weight and usage of water. So on a monthly basis, we make water monthly, but we don't necessarily go through it all. We just keep a certain quantity on order, so we always have enough. So cost is, it just depends on the usage of water. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to reiterate that a lot of residents are coming in and they do see a lot of the different homes being cut, which is a good sign, especially the ones that are sitting next to their house. So I just want to say it's a testament to public works there. They're doing, they're out there not just doing other things, they're actually taking care of the abandoned homes and the homes that we can't get since the donors, so, and I appreciate it is looking better out there. Yes?
Couple more. Wood pack, over our wood pack way over there, they are doing the final lift on that roadway. They will be starting on that on October 9th, so they pushed the schedule a little bit. They're basically resurfacing it, putting a sidewalk in on the south side of the road and the trees won't be put in until spring, there are springtime findings, so those will happen at the end.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Director Weller. Excuse me. Approximately a month ago, we had a problem with a tree or branches fell into our home and damaged it. And so now, thanks to Rec. Development and yourself, the trees are being cut down, especially the ones that are dead and up. What advice do you have for low hanging branches over power lines in the backyards? Normally, come with Edison will come out and make sure that the branches and trees and stuff do not touch the power lines and do not fall over the power lines at the rear of the homes. Any advice for what residents should do?
Well, Conmay only cuts the main power service line branches away. They do that on a cycle. I believe it's three or five there depending on the area. And the lines that come from the power pole to the home, that would be a residential, they would have to call an electrician if they had any issues with branches hanging over there, they're concerned about cutting branches away, because you don't want to drop line there and connect with that, you know, chop yourself or you'd be able to kill yourself. So if you're going to mess with the power lines on your property, you would have to call electrician, either to pull line down, or you can call a tree service and they work around the power lines. They don't know how to do that, so you don't have to have the line disconnected. But anything that's on the property is owner responsible. Anything on the back of the property would be the Conmay or they don't go in there.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Good question. Kevin, is the water tank inspection, is that an annual thing or all three wells?
No.
Okay, it just adds, we need it?
Recommendation is three or five years. You have a lot of sediment pulled up, so it's been a while since we've done and it's time. And as you noticed, they're going to need some paint, so these are your credit for...
So it's all three? This time is all three?
Free, no. All free.
Okay.
Now, each tank has a certain cost, there's a certain cost to do the inspection because they have to dive in the tank. These guys let you go inside with diving suits and they dive in and they evaluate the whole inside of the tank, they remove the debris with vacuum devices, and then they do an outside evaluation.
Well, I'm asking, well, in other words, which state was this was inspected this time?
All three of them.
All three?
All three, all three. The two were elevated and the ground was wet.
All three? Um, three?
Oh, no, three.
Three?
All three, yeah, not three.
Are they all three?
I wish.
No, no, all three. I said all three.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. I could, I'm sorry, Community Development Director Sherri Jezenski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick report. We have 309 code enforcement tickets on the court dock for October 4th. We also sent out 95 inoperable auto letters that went out at the end of the week and we finished them up on Monday, and that's a continual process. As soon as we get rid of inoperable autos, it seems like we keep getting more and more, so it's an ongoing project. Update on liens. The total paid amount to date is $104,571.68. Outstanding amount is $170,541.2. Today, I sent out an additional 10 lien letters equalling the amount of $9,857.75. They have 14 days to pay the bill in full or otherwise I'm going to file liens on those properties. And this concludes my report.
Sherri, I just wanted to ask you, the debt recovery, we're still, are we still involved with debt recovery through this state?
Yes. Mohan handles that.
Okay.
That's with the Illinois Comptroller.
Yes.
How that works is when unpaid tickets get rolled over, they go to collections. And if the collection agency can't collect on those, they get turned over to the Illinois Comptroller. And the Illinois Comptroller garnishes people's wages.
Yes.
I've gotten a few calls for that.
The reason I was asking is because today I met with the Illinois Comptroller and that was also, it was also three other mayors. And out of the four of us, we're the only city that actually deals, that has ever dealt with the debt recovery and they didn't know that it existed. And I told them that we've been doing it for a few years.
Yeah, what they explained to us is it's best for the village to get in all their outstanding debt right away because other communities that aren't involved in, whoever gets in there first gets the first pick.
Absolutely.
So it's important that Gerald keeps sending that stuff on an annual basis.
She named our community, so, and those who named us, and after the meeting was over, the lawyer, I mean, the mayor just came and asked how that happened, so he...
It was a process.
Yes, and that's why I told them it is a process, but it works. I just wanted to let them know. Thank you. That concludes your report.
Yes.
Economic Development Director Jill Lederweiler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. We have before you tonight ordinance annexing the parcel of a land approximately 12 acres and purchasing a portion of the north water tower and the area east of that. The land has been owned by the village since 1968 and was not annexed at that time, residents have forgotten. So we're taking care of that tonight. Work on the Plaza Place Improvement Certificate Number Four have begun. As part of the improvements, Mr. Panos will be installing a landscaping on Sawt Trail, a new pole sign, a new parking lot, additional lighting for the parking lot, and additional improvements to the building including painting and replacing some damaged softens and fascia. The total project costs are about $154,700, of which only a portion of the amount will be reimbursed from the TIF fund for the TIF development agreement approved two weeks ago. As Director Weller stated, the Cook County Department, Highway Department has begun moving the dead ash trees along Sawt Trail. As previously reported, the mayor and I met with the Cook County Superintendent of Highways and he was committed to removing the dead ash trees, the public right away from Sawt Trail or on Sawt Trail from Cottage Grove to Torrance Avenue is maintained by Cook County. We are planning a tax increment financing joint review board meeting in October. It appears that the village is not held an annual meeting since 2013, which means we will be covering the periods of 2014, 15, and 2016 financials for each of the TIF districts at these meetings. Dates and times will be announced in due course. Finally, I've been working to identify properties owned by the village for which it appears the village owes property taxes. As you know, the village is exempt from property taxes, so I'm trying to identify what transpired on these. I'll report back the status to the board at a later date. One final thing I'm going to add to that is we expect to hear on the LTA grant from CMAP, which is the Chicago Metro Problem Area Agency, I'm planning for a comprehensive plan sometime in October. I will report to you guys as soon as I hear on that via email and as well as reporting back to the board during the board meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go further, I forgot to present the collector's report, so at this time I will present the collector's report for the month of June 2017. The property taxes, this is the revenue collected property tax. Property taxes were $23,338.68. Other taxes, $206,735.59. License and permits, $69,327. Fees and services, $183,707.31. Grants, $10,499.85. No transfers miscellaneous, $99,096.33. For total revenue for the month of June, $592,696.76.
Can I have the property report, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Okay, moving on, the force of trustees and standing committees, senior trustee, I'm sorry, senior committee and public services trustee Bernice Brewer.
Public service, I'm waiting on information from Kevin as soon as Mr. Weller, the information
He's leaving, Paul.
Okay. Well, he has the information. It's just... Hi?
Hold on.
Oh, okay. You gave it to him? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, did it go for this time?
Anything for the seniors?
No.
Okay, the senior, senior room is still open Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. Saturday is reserved for anyone that wants to rent it out or have something that has to be rented out. Basically for collection, if you want to have, if someone wants to rent out the facility. So right now, that's the way things are. I'm trying to see if we can have a designated day for some of the activities, that's something we're working on. So hopefully, we can present, the next, the next meeting, we can present something to say. What they do, we get such at the time, and we'll have something, bingo, or something that we can, to look at. And then also trips, like season trips to the, before it gets too cold outside, trips and get buses together that they can go, the seniors can go down to the museums. There's certain days that the seniors have discounts and some days they're free at certain places, so I'm trying to see.
Isn't there?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you agree that we were going to do anything, sell the policy and procedure that we put in place now?
No, no, what I'm saying is I want to try to see if I can get something for them right now. That's not a matter of that. I mean, we still have the summer to go. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's the fall. But if we can procure or secure some tickets, Bloom Township has transportation, if we can get some tickets for some of the events that are still ongoing, I mean, there's nothing wrong with having a bus.
We have everything in place, ready to go in October, some of the policy and procedures.
But in October is a little month away. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I said if we can get something.
We have everything in place, ready to go.
If I can get something between now and then, I would like to present it to them so they can go. But, you know, we've been waiting since May, so, well, June really. So I'm just saying that the rest of the month of October or the rest of the time between now and then, if I get something, I will pass it along, let the seniors know, let you know, get, to get tickets for different events that may, that will be transpiring. And I'm not talking about events to the casino, which I'm sure a lot of people like to do that too, but I'm talking about something for the museums, Carrera, Land and Chartered Downtown, things. Seniors, there are tickets for that. And if Bloom Township has something that's going on, we can get a box of that too. That's until you say, give it, take care. Right now, you said your policy is in the hands of who?
She'll report it.
Who is she?
Uh, sorry, the child, trustee child, who we want on the stats of the policy.
Okay. But she does have, she does, okay. I just have to say it just for right now. Okay, Budget and Finance trustee Roger Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just want to comment that Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting tomorrow at 7:00 here in the Ritz-Humber, and that goes on for.
Thank you. Parks, Recreation, and New Services trustee Calvin Joe. Parks and Recreation Committee meeting will be October 5th at 7:00 PM here at the Villa Chaw. Truck or Treat, October 28th, starting at noon to 3:00 PM. Once again, if you'd like to volunteer, help out, or have any suggestions or to add on to anything, feel free to contact me and let me know and if we could add some new things to, to Truck...
feel free to contact me and let me know, and maybe we could add some new things to Truck or Treat. But you also could come to the committee meeting on the fifth, if you would like to express any more activities, and maybe you would like to volunteer, help out with those activities.
Thank you, trustee. Housing and Government trustee Cecil Tate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will be meeting on this Thursday, the twenty-eighth, at six-thirty. Keep in mind that the purpose of the meeting is to bring the committee up to date, since we've been off since March, people on vacations and out of town, that type of thing. So we'll be updating, bringing members up to date on their new responsibilities, what they should be doing in light of those responsibilities. Other than the meeting on the twenty-eighth, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Orders and review and verification trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next ordinance review meeting is going to be October twenty-third at six-thirty, six-thirty P.M. here at the Village Hall. What I'd like to have put on the committee on the whole meeting agenda is we finish the vicious animal, dangerous animal and rabid animal ordinance. So I'd like it for your review. And then if it's okay, then I'd like to see it put on to be voted on. Because this has been going on since last year. So it is completed, and just to let you know. And at our next ordinance meeting, we're going to review false alarms. The chief of police has a concern about how many false alarms. There's some that are done, they have ten in a month for false alarms. So we're going to review that. It's going to take us a little while, because we have some things that we need to review. And as far as the policy for the senior center, and I discussed it with the ordinance committee, we don't need to make an ordinance on it, we can vote on the policy. So, you know, trustee, we're converting it before the board can vote on it, and that would be the policy. As far as verification committee, I'm going to start pulling some of the flowers, because now the weather's going to start getting cooler, they die off. And I'm going to, I'm working on, I'd like to have at the entrance and in the back, I'd like to do a voltage kind of thing, you know. And I would also like to possibly do plaques for our adoptive spots. We have Altima's and Smith Farms are longtime adopters of certain areas in our town, which is three ninety-four. And then we have one we call the Brown Thirty, but it's really on Torrance, which is our welcome sign, and McDonald's. So I'd like to maybe present them with a plaque, so I'm working on that and do it at a board meeting. And thanking them for all their support. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee.
Make sure it might be two policies on the day for October third.
You wanted to be, yeah, the one she wanted to be on the committee meeting?
That's the day we had sent for, October third.
I'm going to say you wanted to be on the committee meeting, to be discussed?
No, it doesn't need to be discussed, it was discussed the last.
October third is committee meeting.
Okay. Or it goes out there on October third.
The October tenth?
October tenth.
Okay, so you, okay, but I just wanted to go back to trustee Todd. The ordinance you wanted to be discussed on October third, to have it on the committee meeting?
Right, for the jar to be reviewed.
Correct.
To make sure that it's all okay.
Okay.
Because it's been, it takes since November of last year. So we want to make sure it's okay. And if it is, then put it on October tenth on the board meeting to be voted on.
And then trustee Brewer wants her policy to be part of, you don't want, there's no more discussion?
And then somebody asked for comments, it's been spoken around for the last four months. Nobody had to copy.
So you want to go on, what they have to do?
Trustee, Jake, and I think I answered all his questions, so.
But you didn't.
If you have additional questions, we send them to you, you should not be answering what you need answered.
So you'd like to have the policy put on the October tenth to be voted on, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, just send it in.
All right, Public Safety trustee Bezzeb.
The Public Safety will meet next Wednesday, that's October fourth, six o'clock in the evening here in the Rottunda. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Unfinished business. Do you?
No, Mr. Mayor. No, I'm not prepared to go forward with item eight A. So we will move, I'd like to move to the third of October.
So you went on the?
Committee.
Committee, the second committee meeting. Oh, no, I'm trying to third, right, so you went on?
The first committee.
Okay. Real story, let me tell you, she's quick. So we'll table this, eight A. Nine, new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the House Payable and Dispersment, David. September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, first of all, village policy. It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, I went to the office and I asked Mohan to provide me a copy of the invoice for the public service, and he told me that I couldn't get it. So I just wanted to put on record that I requested the copy for the, the invoice for Republic.
Was it for this invoice, the one that we're holding on that? Our heads?
Yes, one that's on page one of the House Payable Dispersment.
Okay, because, because that, the way I understood, he said that you wanted everyone from two thousand sixteen.
Yes, he told me, no, I couldn't get that, but I said, well, I can see everything.
Okay.
So I just, you know, to let you know that I did the copy of, I went and asked him, and he told me no, so.
He told you no, but he didn't have time back then?
He told me no.
Any more questions? Madam clerk, please call the board.
Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Government Agreement with the Cook, I'm sorry, Cook County for the Provision of Health Enforcement on Inspection Services.
So.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance admitting chapter seventy-four for traffic and vehicles of the municipal code.
So?
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. A motion to approve a resolution, appoint a director of the Southern Urban Land Bank Development Authority. That person would be trustee Tate. I'll entertain a motion to move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Oh, sorry. Uh, yes.
Todd?
Zupan? Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion is carried. A motion to approve ordinance annexing certain village-owned property. That's what was discussed at our last meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Todd?
Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number ten, general comments from the mayor and board of trustees. We'll start with mayor, I'm sorry, we'll start with trustee Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, we talked about IML. We could be here all night. I'm just going to make it really short. It's pretty overwhelming, but it's very informative. So I put a lot of my eyes on my feet, going from session to session. You know, it's not like a big party that we go down there and don't do anything. We go to sessions, and the sessions last an hour. And you're going to have four or five in a day. So I'm looking forward to next year, because I know what to expect now. But that's all I have.
Trustee Brewer?
I attended IML two over the weekend, and was fascinated to me about the Gary Bigg, Biggheim from double E.P.A., he was there, and he recognized Saw Village, and he offered us to come down and talk to him about the different fundings that we have for infrastructure repair. Now, he was in the water safety division that he before, so now he's moved on to infrastructure. And he said he uses us as one of his hosting children whenever somebody wants to come in and talk about infrastructure repair. So he invited us to wrap up our application and send it in. So we take a look at it, and he's going to guide us through personally on how to get loans for infrastructure improvement for the upcoming water upgrades. The conference was very informative, and I encourage everybody to go and learn a lot of things. Secondly, I want to talk about is that I asked the employee of the village to provide me with some documents that I needed for a house receivable, and he said I couldn't have them, so I'd like to know how this is going to be addressed. I asked this employee before about some documents that I needed to go and do some work. And again, I had to put four years in that I want to get documents. And I don't think that's quite right, but I'd like to know how he's going to address this when I can't get documents that I need in order to do my infrastructure report. And that's the end of my report. End of my call.
I'm, like I said before, I'll deal with it tomorrow. Person's not here right now, so I can't tell you more than I will deal with it tomorrow. Because I was, I didn't know that he actually told you no. Okay.
And I'd like to talk to Brewer, and he can talk to, and I think he spoke to, well, he said he called Jim Zurback. Well, with Gary Biggheim, so he was talking to Jim Zurback about funding and everything. So they're real faithful and give us additional loans because of the community side, so hardship loan, because we got a loan before. And they are aware of all the situation with the rice court and everything. And he's willing to work with us and push the deal through. It's going to take about two years, but we need to start working on putting some information and getting our financial statements together and all this sort of stuff. So he's the managing manager for infrastructure improvement, and he's more than willing to help Saw Village, you know, entertain with that application. So it takes about two years.
What type of loan?
What type of loan? They have about four in this particular.
I mean, these matching loans, or maybe, that's what, what type of loan, you know?
I didn't think about grants.
I mean, it's a loan that's.
There's going to be a model, you know, that is going to have, you know, like I said, I guess, financial statements together, you know. And they use the same kind of financial statement we did with that last law. We also look at some other residential avenues that we can pick up. And also, you could say, you know, they got some kind of deal going on with the private, uh, natural health that would, you know, work with us and the loans and stuff for the infrastructure improvement. Even if we don't move toward like Mr. West, and these are his words, that he's aware that infrastructure has to be fixed and has to be developed and what have been. So he said he implores us to, you know, kill the quiet, you know, let us just sit down and talk. Like I said, I guess it takes two, three years just to complete. But he's willing to work with us personally and give the loans, so. That's something we need to do, you know, sometimes.
Trustee Tate?
What's coming rather quickly is the PSC, and there are flyers out there. They're coming here on October twelfth to give an orientation to individuals about professions in the healthcare field. And I noticed that it's not, it's still not on the village website. I put posters up both ends of the building with PSC information, plus the twelfth of October information on there. So when you go out, if you want to take a look at it, feel free to invite your family and friends to come here on October twelfth. We will have a session, a portion of the session will be in Spanish for those who are limited in English speaking. I need them to let me know ahead of time, I think I said October fifth, that we can let PSC know that we will have a certain number of people who are limited in English speaking, who will be attending that session. But take a look at the flyers that are outside, grab one of those. And just remember, October twelfth is the day that they'll be here to do their information for us. The second thing is Veterans Day celebration, I'm moving ahead, kind of rapidly. Eleven, eleven, eleven. That's November eleventh at eleven o'clock in the morning. We're going to have the Veterans Day celebration. Also, prior to that, if you can jot down, or even next week, give me the name, the names, rank, branches of service, and telephone numbers of individuals that will, that I can get ahead of time to present our flags. We're going to purchase some flags, so we're going to need someone to do that for us. So give me the name, their rank, their branch of service, and a telephone number. They will come before this board and present these branded flags that we plan on getting. They will also probably be used again on November eleventh. But I want them ahead of time, and I will give you exact dates once I start getting information. But we want those individuals ahead of time, prior to. We want them in October to do the flag presentations. Also, I need some volunteers for Veterans Day, November eleventh. I need some volunteers to work handing out things to the veterans for the celebration. So again, if you want to volunteer for Veterans Day itself, eleven, eleven, at eleven A.M., send me, give me a note to us, give a telephone call here at Village Hall, and let me know that you'll be willing to volunteer for the Veterans Day celebration. Third thing I'd like to know is the, with the senior center meeting, is there anything scheduled for, say, noon on the eleventh of November? Because we would like. We would like to have, we serve the veterans food. We do patronize, one of our businesses, and we serve them food on Veterans Day. And it wasn't a huge hassle for veterans to go from here to Popeyes where they ate, and there was all kind of confusion there. It's simply easier for them to walk across the hall to the senior center. So I would like to move it to the senior center. I talked to Popeyes, who's going to service us again, and they've given me their blessing that they can pull this off. So we would like to have the celebration at the senior center. And so they just walk across the hall, and they're in there. The final thing is that I received a message. I had spoken a couple of months earlier about an investor in Saw Village. Those are to cut grass and board up homes if it was needed, and that type of thing. And I had asked him to give me a plan, because I need, I need to. And I had asked him to give me a plan, because I need, I need the board to understand what they were agreeing to. And he left me a message and said that he would not be submitting a plan. Uh, this is the last of September, so I guess not. But, uh, the board of service, what I was interested in also, but he said he would not submit a plan, uh, to us. So that investor, that item is, is off of my, my notebook. I need to deal with that. Trustee Brewer, you were going to give me, I had asked for a plan, you had some village residents who were going to do some grass cutting, that they got compensation off of their water bill. And I asked for that plan, and which I have not received. So that also, I'm, I'm striking that from my, our book, my book. So it's not something I need to deal with, uh, an- anymore. Uh, and that's the last I'm going to have.
Right, thank you trustee Tate.
Final trustee Tate?
In regards to?
Uh, I'll check with the chairperson of the senior committee to inform her, make sure Saturday, October 11th is the day, but I don't think we have anything scheduled, if I'm not mistaken, you know. This means we don't have anything scheduled for that day. Uh, and that would probably be planned, but I'll check and make sure and get back to you about that. The second thing is that the, uh, uh, when I mentioned a plan for the grass cutting, this was the idea when, uh, bunch of residents and I were sitting around, during the election time, sitting around, talking about what they could do for the village fair, what they wanted to do. This was just an idea, I put it out there to you. Uh, nothing has been even thought about it again since then. And, and frankly, they don't want to do anything unless they see what, what you guys are doing for us. Most of the people that were in the grass cutting, uh, program last year got sort of, uh, they were disgusted with what came out, so they didn't want to go on with the plan because you had something concrete in writing. So you waiting on us, and we don't have anything in there, which I explained to you, there was just an idea. We haven't, we haven't gone any further with just, uh, breakfast talk around sitting around tables. So if you have some kind of plan where you have got a contractor that's going to identify each building and stuff, I can go back to them and say, well, this particular property is going to be cut down when you guys work and we, we will take on that. Other than that, I don't think they're going to do anything, and, and it's just an idea.
Well, I'm not going to. I'm not going to play one against the other. Who's got the lowest, who's got the lowest amount?
Well, they're not going to do anything, so.
Okay, what did I say? The agenda.
There you go.
All right.
Trustee Jones?
Yeah, I, I went to, um, IML, and I probably went to make 12, 13 classes. Um, there's a couple that I'm trying to reach out to. Uh, mainly one about, um, um, plight, and one about homelessness and poverty, that, um, I think would be a good presentation because they kind of connect with each other. Uh, one could fulfill the other. And, uh, so I'm trying to put some together with, with that and, uh, make a presentation, but want to make sure I check. Uh, this is an independent, um, company, um, that's dealing with the homelessness and poverty, so I want to make sure that they're legit and they're a stand-up business. And, um, and once I go through that, then I'll try to schedule, uh, a brief, I'll say brief, um, presentation, um, so I'll keep you posted with that.
Thanks. Thank you trustee Jones. Trustee Zupan?
Nothing, thank you.
Trustee Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you have a couple of comments, so I did go to IML as well, along with most of the trustees, and it was a very good experience. Only issue I had is that, uh, some classes that were interested in were coincided with other classes, so you couldn't get a chance to go to both, you had to go to one or another. So maybe next year, you know, we send certain trustees to whatever attends their committees, to those classes, and then we come back and we share their information amongst each other. Uh, my second comment is, if possible, uh, is it possible that for, under new business, that we could sometimes be more specific in what we're, uh, approving? So for example, would you approve council payable amount of 461,000, whatever the case may be? Motion to approve an ordinance annexing 15 Peterson? Things like that, is that possible that we could start doing that?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, say, um, something about, um, the trustees that went down to IML, um, this is, I've been going to IML since 2006, and with other trustees and mayors. And I think it was just one other time outside of this time that I actually saw a large enthusiasm with the trustees that actually went down. In other words, they were into it, they went to the class, and they came out to discuss. As a matter of fact, you didn't see them. Only at the times I, I do saw them, but when, um, there was something for the group. But outside of that, all day long, on Friday, they were gone, Saturday, they were gone, and even Thursday. So, uh, next year, you'd be absolutely right. Because if we, if we attend the same classes, then there's going to be a chance to spread out. So that's something that we can do, but you guys, I mean, I, I, I saw the class was well-attended by South Village. Uh, and this is something I haven't seen in, in quite a while, so it is a learning experience, even when it came back, so as, as trustee Todd said, it was overwhelming, and it is, it's a lot to take in at one time. But one thing I didn't see that I always saw, they didn't have a lot of handouts. But then, guess what they do, they do, they put it on PDF. So you, so your phone is, you can actually follow through it with your phone, so that's, that's a new innovation that they're doing. Then also the IML app, that's very useful, so, uh, those are the things that they just recently incorporated. So I just wanted to say to the trustees that went down, you guys, um, you do, you know, you, you were very, and I listened to some of them ask questions and, and ask things, and that's what it's all about, is finding out what's, what's going on. I think it's one of the best things that, um, especially with the trustee, to, to get everything all in one, as they call it, one-stop shop. So I just wanted to say, thank you guys.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, you know, that's, you bring that up a good point with the app, and actually to your point about being spread too thin with all of those sessions, most of the sessions have their presentations on the app, so even if we could attend some of those sessions, we at least have access to their presentations. So it's not quite the same as being there, but pretty darn close.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, say.
It was moved by trustee Todd, and second by trustee Brewer. Any question? All in favor? Motion carried, good night, thank you guys very much.